All right, let's get started. Mr. Hatcher, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Let's pray. Most kind gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this day and all the many blessings of life that you bestowed. God, we just ask that you'll be with this body of commissioners as they meet to take on the business at hand. Lord, as always, we so very pray that you'll be with our nation and continue to bless our county. And God, as always, remember my little buddy Landon. In your son Jesus Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Would you want to lead us in the flag too much?
Flag allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, may I come on to roll call? Parker?
Here.
Shane Bowman?
Here.
Greg Brooks?
Here.
Danny Carver?
Here.
Debbie Davis?
Here.
Mosh Davis?
Here.
Kristy Harden?
Here.
Kelly Morgan?
Here.
John Pippinger?
Here.
Samantha Trenton?
Here.
Uh, we are opening this, uh, June twentieth, twenty twenty-four county commission meeting. Uh, approval of the minutes from the previous meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mosh Davis?
Yes.
Kristy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Pippinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
All right, approval of the reports of the offices?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mosh Davis?
Yes.
Kristy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Pippinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
We have three for approval of notary. Tammy Epperson, uh, from Benton, Tennessee. Haley Stewart, also from Benton. And then Sierra McGinnis, also from Benton.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mosh Davis?
Yes.
Kristy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Pippinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
Ryan, would you like to speak?
Thank you. Um, I passed you all out an email that I received, uh, on behalf of the IED board. The, uh, Discover Copper Basin Group is wanting to have a workshop with the IED board, um, to talk about the relatory. Um, my personal opinion is, and I've not brought it up to the whole IED board, but we can't create the rel authority. So the commission is who can create the rel authority. So, um, I, I think this should be a commission issue, but, um, you know, we work at the pleasure of the commission. So if you ask us to take up the rel authority, we'll look at it. But, um, I just kinda wanted to loop you all in before we sink a bunch of time or, uh, turn it down, uh, and let you all have the final say so if you want the IED board to take up the rel authority or not.
Can the Discover Copper Basin do it without the commission doing it?
No, it has to be voted on.
Has to be voted in?
Yeah, it has to be voted on my board.
I thought we put it rest.
A year, two months ago.
Yeah.
Long time ago.
I thought we put it rest a couple of years ago. Yep.
It was seven months ago and we added it over two then, so.
How, how did this come back in? Somebody on IED board?
Uh, no, I had received an email from the, the Discover Copper Basin Group wanting to set up the time to start the workshop to, to work on it.
That's our thing, don't it?
Yes. I thought, I thought we were gonna have or said something about a workshop at one point in time. Did we, did we mention that?
We did, and then when we were leaving that night, everybody was like, we don't. We're getting this, let's get it to IED.
It would be different if we could create the rel authority. And I mean, we can look at it and see how it comes out of, out of the IED, um, and, and make a recommendation one way or another, if that's what you want. But, um, I feel like we'd be beating our head against the wall since we can't really create it ourselves.
What's everybody's feelings?
I think there was two years ago.
You don't want to come presenting anything or anything up up. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Budget amendments. Uh, we have, let's see, how many we got? Number one on one, uh, we've got number fifty-four, uh, going from one oh one, five four, one one zero, one eight seven. Um, for a total of seventy thousand, one dollar. Um, we've also got fifty-four, one ten, one oh eight at nineteen. Fifty-four, one ten, three thirty-four at the dollar. Fifty-four, one ten, four twenty-five for fuel at nine thousand. Fifty-four, two thirty at four ten for custodial of two thousand. Fifty-four, two thirty, four twenty-two for the food supply, forty thousand dollars, which is the total of the seventy thousand, one dollar from the, uh, sheriff's department. Also from the sheriff's department, we have a forty-four, one seventy on miscellaneous fund of sixty-one, nine forty-eight, eighty. Uh, going to the proposed expenditure funds of five four, one one, one four eight dispatch of sixty-one thousand, nine forty-eight, eighty. Uh, we then have several from the, uh, thirty-nine, zero, zero, zero. Uh, five one, three hundred, two oh one, five one, five, zero, zero, seven oh nine. Uh, we also have fifty-one, six hundred, one sixty-two, three nine, zero, zero, again. Fifty-one, eight hundred, four ten, also again for thirty-nine, zero, zero. Five one, nine hundred, three forty-seven, also three oh five. And then five two, one, zero, zero, one oh three for fourteen thousand, nine hundred, seventy-six, eighty-three. And this is all for, looks like board fees, social security employee insurance, Medicare, retirement insurance, um, registered deeds, retirement and insurance. And the county building, utility, Medicare, retirement, social security, and then general administration for life insurance, others. And then accounting, retirement and unemployment for also, uh, fourteen thousand, nine seventy-six, eighty-three. This is kinda like a cleanup of the. So all of this is cleanup. Um, the other line is for six thousand, four hundred, ninety-six dollars and eighty-four cents. This is from the assessor of property trustee, uh, the county clerk, circuit court, chancery, juvenile, uh, civil defense, gasoline, rescue squad, uh, equipment in service and maintenance. Uh, also some retirements and utilities and gas for a total of six thousand, four, about six hu- thousand, four hundred, ninety-six dollars and eighty-four cents. Um, fifty-eight amendment is also, uh, for six hundred, four thousand, forty-five thousand, eight hundred, seventy-nine dollars and seventy-two cents for the cleanup on the sheriff's department for overtime, uh, guards dispatch, social security insurance, gasoline, travel. Uh, the litter grant also for Medicare and other supplies. Um, we've also got the corrections going into the EDP grant and the ELC grant. EMA, the social security and the Medicare also for that. And then a little grant to retirement for a total of six hundred, forty-five thousand, eight hundred, seventy-nine, seventy-two. Um, and then also the senior center, library, undesignated grant flow, the VA, VA office of, uh, undesignated fund balance of nine thousand, six hundred, forty-one. And it's going into retirement, Medicare, uh, insurance, bonus payment for nine thousand, six hundred, forty-one dollars. And that is all for the general one oh one. We have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on motion? All right, roll call. Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mosh Davis?
Yes.
Kristy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Pippinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
The other is our road department, uh, cleanup for the end of the year. Roy, do you have anything?
It's just cleanup. That's the one you emailed out today?
Yes.
Because that's the one.
Yes.
This you should have off there.
For the sixty-two hundred, four oh four and the sixty-eight hundred, seven oh seven for a total of eighty-five thousand, three hundred, seventy-six going into, uh, sixty-two hundred, four oh five, sixty-six, two oh four, sixty-two, zero, zero, two twelve for eighty-five thousand, three hundred, seventy-six for that one. And then, um, fund balance, thirty-four, five, fifty, uh, two thousand, five hundred, eighteen, thirteen, uh, going to line five, six, nine, three, zero for, uh, petroleum special tax of five sixteen, forty-seven, five ninety for federal through state, forty-seven, nine ninety for other directed federal. Forty-four, one ten interest and forty-six, four twenty for state aid of a balance of two thousand, five hundred, eighteen, thirteen. And then also, uh, we've got an eighty-two, two hundred dash six two O debt service contribution of a hundred and fifty-three, nine thirty, seventy-five. Sixty-two thousand, four oh eight is concrete of fifteen. Sixty-two thousand, three twelve contracts with private agency at twenty-five thousand for a total of one ninety-three, nine thirty, seventy-five. And then sixty-one hundred has several, uh, membership dues, bonus, bonus payments, postals, charges, travel, uh, drugs, medical supplies and other charges. Sixty-eight hundred is highway equipment at twenty-three. Sixty-two hundred is crushed stone, pipe, road signs and other supplies and materials. Sixty-three hundred is maintenance and repair equipment and parts and gas. And then sixty-five hundred is the, um, liability insurance for a hundred and ninety-three, nine thirty, seventy-five. And that's all his cleanup for the year. Hey, Roy. Do these need to be numbered different? They're all numbered the same number. So does it go twenty-four, six, twenty-four, seven, twenty-four, eight, or twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six?
Which page?
At the top.
Your amendment number?
All your amendment numbers. Most of the time they're numbered different.
You want it to page different?
That's normally what's what they are. I'm just asking you, I don't, it doesn't matter to me, I just.
Yeah. It, it doesn't matter, it's all considered cleanup, but we can change that and amend that if you want that.
Um, yeah, they each have to be numbered.
They each have to be numbered separate. So I guess that's why I'm asking, how's your numbering go? Does, does it matter what you did, twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six?
Be twenty-four dash six, dash seven, dash eight.
I just didn't want you to.
Twenty-four year.
I didn't want you to get like all that time there for something so small.
Cause whenever I put it in the minute books, there'll be numbered two different pages as the way I'll put it in the books, so.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay.
If you have any discussion, roll call. Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mosh Davis?
Yes.
Kristy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Pippinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
Um, budget amendments for the school board. Info.
We didn't have any.
Anybody here? Oh, there he is. Hey.
Hey.
I missed you.
It's all right. Um, is that lighting or?
The lighting, that's totally different than the amendments, yes. Unless you have an amendment for that.
Pardon me?
I said, unless you have an amendment for that.
No.
Okay.
So we'll just roll all the amendments into next Thursday.
Mr. Brooks, abandoned phone lines.
Uh, I need to tell you what, next month, we gotta get some more information. Put it on, you go out. Again, it's been a period, Jeff.
All right. Mr. Davis, Mosh.
We talked about this, uh, down there, hold on. We talked about the other Sunday week. We need to get to, uh, where we get some drawings and survey and stuff. Greg, you're the commissioner of this building committee. We need to, uh, get something stolen.
Didn't we?
That's a major stuff.
Didn't we send out RFPs for it?
Order of robbery, we didn't, didn't we, Robbie?
I'm sorry.
Order of robbery, we didn't.
I've, I've not had anything as far as like the actual size to go out to build.
Oh, I thought we done.
I've thought the whole thing, but this ain't what it is.
Get it out of my way. So if I could just get something so I could turn it out. I've talked to a couple of our local, but without knowing exactly kinda what the plans or the drawings were wanting to be looked like as far as the size of the building. And then being able to go out to RFP to get somebody to form some blueprints.
You still got that hand thing you drew up?
Uh, yeah, somewhere. Uh, do you remember key?
I don't remember at the top of it.
It was sixty-two by eighty, eighty-two long, sixty-two wide.
Cause we figured it out, I think we went over.
We went up and up down.
Americans.
You wanna have another committee meeting on it?
Yeah.
When I do that. Get what we need for Robbie.
For Robbie, it's a big.
Yeah, we can get it out. And also, where are we at on the survey? Have you heard anything from surveyor?
I've not heard anything back, I'll call him again this month.
Do we need to look, get another surveyor? It's been about two, three months.
It's been about three months.
We'll just meet, uh, after a budget meeting next week up here. That way, I might make two, three, yeah. Everybody be here, it's on building committee too that week. I guess that's certain too, I thought we was taking bids from architect for some reason.
Well, I thought we talked a little bit, but, uh, I talked to Robbie, he said he hadn't gotten anything.
I hesitate to think as far as the playouts and things that's coming forward, but just seems to do. And on that with architect, whenever, last time I talked with Jim, was he got with Bo, Bo's office to have the map of the school.
Okay.
But I will make that call again tomorrow.
All right.
What about the road entrance over there?
Yeah, just maybe that works.
The plaza property.
Oh.
The, the road entrance, you, they ever applied for the access?
Eric's been working on that. Okay.
We're talking about building a pool right over here, y'all.
Yeah.
By property.
I know the plaza is. But he's talking about plaza as a cross sale. Well, the sale would go toward that.
Oh, well, thank you, dude. I'm glad you guys are on the unit.
I'm making after a meeting next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Trenton on the community center.
Well, we put this on there the other night when we was in our budget meeting. Um, we all had agreed to put it on there. Um, and it was to change sides, cause, uh, we're kinda packed in here. So we would like to change sides if everybody is okay with that, so we can have a bigger side. Do we need to vote on that?
Do we need to vote on that to assign it? Yes. All right. Wanna make that form of a motion?
Yeah.
My second.
Your second?
Key. Key. Any discussion on it? All right, roll call. Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mosh Davis?
Yes.
Kristy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Pippinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna move number nine down to the very last thing. Uh, lighting upgrade to Polk County schools. How about you, uh?
Just my shining moment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I look good, man.
I don't know.
So, uh, we have had the same lighting in our schools since they were built, and some of them were built. Well, I wish first grade it, Benton, and I'm nearly grown. Charles McClure is really near the ground, uh, with the school there. But anyway, you know, we have some old schools and, uh, so we were looking at changing our lighting from tray lighting and tube lighting to LED lighting. And we wanted to see how much money that would save. We had some companies come in and do an analysis, uh, in their study, they had, part of their study, it's a government program. Part of their study had to include a guarantee from the electric company that it would pay for itself over a pure hundred and something thousand dollars. I have that, I think you have that agreement. I have the, uh, resolution here that needs to be approved, but. So it met all the requirements that the saving in lighting would pay each year for the payment that it would take to do the job. And that has to be guaranteed and signed by the electric company. And that has been done. So, as you all know, whenever we enter a long-term agreement, like bus leases or any other agreement, we have to have that not only approved by my board, which this has been approved by my school board, it also has to be approved by you. So, if you got any questions, I have people here, I'm here, uh, you can just hit me. You don't have to be nice either, I'm.
Of course. You're saying that's guaranteed by?
By voluntary electric company. And that's part of the study. It has, it has to go through an approval process by then and be signed off by then.
Now, is this going into elementary school or whole everywhere?
Every school.
Every school.
Yeah.
Because how long is the elementary school, bath area before we start hauling?
Y'all can, y'all can tell me that better than I can tell you that. I mean, I'd like to have new schools tomorrow. We can enter that conversation now if you'd like.
You probably don't wanna enter it with that. But.
The next best thing is then prove the line.
It'll come soon, sooner rather than later.
This is gonna happen this summer if we, you know, this is the last step. We've gone through the study, we've gone through, uh, the guarantee processes, we've gone through school board approval, and we just have to get your approval. How much is this gonna save you a year, James? It's gonna save over a hundred thousand dollars a year.
I get one, I get a fifty-three.
Yeah.
Hundred and ten pound?
Yep.
If, if I may.
Come on in, this is, this is my guy.
I'll stand back here. Um, so what we're doing this under is the state of Tennessee has a really unique program. It's called the Energy Efficient School Initiative. And what they do is they fund these projects at one and a half percent interest, so well below market rate. And what they do is, is the state of Tennessee reviews all the technical data, all the engineering. The state of Tennessee reviews all the savings. And they, they also confirm what, what we are providing the school district contractually, that a certain amount of savings will be met. In this scenario, it's just over a hundred thousand dollars. So that is a guaranteed savings. Because what we're doing is, I'm gonna give you an example. So that fixture above you is burning roughly a hundred and forty-four watts. When we're done, it'll burn about forty. And then if you extrapolate that across all the light fixtures across the district, that adds up to a lot of savings. Um, what this does is it improves the lighting in all the learning environments, the gyms, cafeterias, exterior lighting throughout the district. These are twenty-year systems, so it removes all the lighting maintenance for the district staff. They've got HVAC units and all kinds of other things they take care of. So what, this is a huge cost savings. The state of Tennessee is both funding it and backing the savings and engineering on it. Um, and the school district sees a lot of benefits in the learning environments for the lighting standpoint as well.
And you don't have a financial commitment? You just, we just.
You just made our approval.
You just made your approval for all of them persons.
I make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Any other discussion? Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mosh Davis?
Yes.
Kristy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
John Pippinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. County Executive Hatcher.
Um, so I have the IED board's reappointment. As you look in your packet, this, this comes a recommendation from our county attorney. Appointment that's in question is Mr. Tim Taylor. Uh, Tim has reached out that he seeks to go back to serve the remainder of his term. So this time I would recommend that the commission put Tim Taylor back on the IED.
Hatcher to approve.
Second.
Your second. Any discussion? All right, roll call. Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mosh Davis?
Yes.
Kristy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Pippinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
All right. County Executive Hatcher on the surplus to the library.
We have a list of items, including square wooden, medium table, vision technology, freedom machine, Samsung, Toga, cell phone signal booster, wood and bone, bear projector, uh, proctor, coffee maker, and a Foy River Tennessee diamond six poker. This comes from the library board to disperse of, for the library.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mosh Davis?
Yes.
Kristy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Pippinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
And now, Mr. Trenton on your resolution.
Well, I'm gonna read something to you guys before Keith reads it. Um, we've been working on this. So, um, first I want to dispel any rumors of fake news that has come to my attention. This commission is not seeking to remove funding from the Boys and Girls Club. That was never on our table, and frankly, I'm not sure for how that rumor got started. I and other commissioners on this board are supporters of the Boys and Girls Club. In doing so, what we do not want to do, what we want to do is adhere to the CDC guidelines and the new EPA regulations. I have those. That are not addressed in what? In the, uh, email that Eric Kinsey lettered to the commission. It's about the children of the Copper Basin and Polk County. I love and support the idea that children of the Copper Basin community will have a new Boys and Girls Club to use. What I do not want to have is for them to be put in harm's way. This resolution amendment is simple. Keeping our kids off of industrial site with open mine shafts, current mining and logging activities and environmental hazard is a no-brainer. This is not a difficult decision. There are plenty of alternatives to place a Boys and Girls Club that do not have any of these factors which should automatically disqualify. that do not have any of these factors which should automatically disqualify, but for some reason, it's being overlooked. If we are truly looking out for our children, we will adopt this amended resolution to make sure that they are free of harm situation. As commissioners, we have all said we are looking out for our children in the Copper Basin and Polk County. Let's do that today and give them the respect that they deserve and keep them off a site we know is not safe or fit for children, even for Boys and Girls Club. We got this off of the EPA website. Um, it clearly states that the site is not ready for anticipated use. It also clearly says it's a super fun site, and it will be for years to come until it is cleaned up, which they've applied for a grant for that, so... Keith, do you want to read our amendment?
I will. Resolution, Polk County, 2022 CDBG Copper Basin Boys and Girls Club Development amended. Whereas, there is currently a lack of school-aged childcare in Polk County and parents and caregivers, which has, has been worsened by the pandemic and childcare issues that it has caused. And whereas, there is a need on the eastern side of Polk County for school-aged childcare, which will help to alleviate this problem that, that places a burden on productivity and the economy by causing difficulties maintaining employment with the lack of childcare options. And whereas, the Boys and Girls Club of the Elkhorn Region has proposed to construct a new Copper Basin Boys and Girls Club located at 206 Cougar Drive, Copper Hill, Tennessee, 37317, which will include a new gymnasium and education building. And whereas, the commission will continue to support the Copper Basin Boys and Girls Club efforts to obtain grants for a new build site in the Copper Basin on lands that are not deemed environmentally hazardous to children and/or in addition to designated active superfunds within the past five years. And whereas a Boys and... Whereas, a Boys and Girls Club land site will not include designated superfund sites and/or land that has been, has been designated as a superfund site for five years prior. Reclassification along with continued yearly environmental studies determining the area safe for children. And whereas, the state of Tennessee has community development block grants of up to six hundred and thirty thousand dollars for which local governments make a feat in order to solve important community needs such as community livability and community revitalization. And whereas, since Polk County is a member of the Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development's three-star economic and community development program, Polk County is eligible to apply for up to six hundred and thirty thousand dollars in CDBG funds and is eligible for three-star four percent discount towards the required local match. Whereas, Polk County is eligible to apply for a community development block grant in April, 2022, and is able to apply for projects on behalf of 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporations such as the Boys and Girls Club of the Elkhorn Region. And whereas, the Boys and Girls Club of the Elkhorn Region will be responsible for the required seventeen percent in matching funds as required by the grant and all additional project costs needed to complete the project. Be it therefore resolved that the Polk County Commission does hereby authorize the Polk County Executive to submit an application for the successful award of the grant subject to its approval by the state. Be it further resolved, if said application is approved by the Polk County... By County Executive is hereby authorized to accept on behalf of Polk County said community development grant. Execute any and all documents and enter into an agreement necessary for successful application of award of the grant and to enter into a project administration agreement with the Southeast Tennessee Development District, subject to ECD approval.
So, this is basically the same one that we approved. It's just amended adding that the two paragraphs for the superfund site, that it has to be at least five years prior to all of that. So, we know our kids are safe.
And I know we have lots of people for discussion, um, so we're going to allow, um... I have several names that wanted to speak. We're gonna let them speak if there's any of the commissioners that would like to go first. Do you want us to go first, or do you want to listen to the people? You want to go first, we'll do that, and then go to people.
Well, I've got a couple of issues because I guess I'm kind of left out in the dark as to when we even voted that we, or even discussed anywhere that we were going to be discussing what the commission was doing moving forward on this resolution. Second thing, I guess I got a question with, is on this resolution, why are we trying to amend something that we wasn't approved for? The 2022 application was denied. We did not get approval from the state. We were not awarded that funds. The 2023 application and resolution that submitted did not have an address. We did get approval for that. So, the whole address thing, and I give it, and I understand where everybody's coming from. But to use that basis, we're using something that we wasn't approved for to begin with.
So, on the, um, application, they did use this. They used this location. That's the, the resolution that we done.
But the resolution that we done in 2023 does not have an address on it.
The application that you guys from the Boys and Girls Club on the board that you sit on? We passed this amendment to do this money through the county to put it near the school, not on a superfund site.
Well, do you realize that the school itself appears on a superfund site? So, do we require, do we require the schools to go through all the testing too?
It's not, it's not.
It's not. It's not. Right here is the EPA website.
I realize that's not.
Where it says that it is clearly a superfund site. Do you realize that in the next month, they're gonna be mining gravel on the same property within a half a mile of the?
You cannot like it, and I was with you guys on your decision, and I supported you. We've done everything on our end that is required for the Boys and Girls Club. We've got phase one, phase two, we've had the studies. We've done it. If we're getting approval from the state, from the EPA, everywhere that we've got in this binder right here of everything we've done, if you don't like the results from the state, you need to take it up with the state because we're doing what we're supposed to do. And slinging accusations that we put kids in harm's way, those, that's, that's, that's a big deal.
But it is, that building is.
But it's not.
It is, there is asbestos in it, there's lead paint.
You don't think asbestos has ever slowly got here?
Multiple, multiple areas of that building that is not even fit for having kids in it. Why would we not build a new building?
And phase one, and phase two, environmental survey, surveys done, radon, lead paint, testing, no concerns. Phase one, findings concerned included old transformer, potential leakage. That was what came out of that one. Phase two, the testing of those concerns found no contaminations. Asbestos abatement, that's normal in old buildings, we got it in our schools.
Why would we not build a new building on land that was donated to us by four fractional township?
But that's what it comes down to, is because you're not telling an organization that you don't have control of where they need to build. And when that happens, that's a severe overstep.
But this money is being run through the county.
But it's not county funds, it's not tax funds.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
No, it's not, it comes from congressional.
It is.
No.
Hold any comments from the, Kelly, till it's your turn.
It is flow-through money.
It is flow-through, but it's not coming, no.
Yes, it is.
CDBG in the hard fund.
Where do you think that money comes from, Kelly?
From congressional, it's not coming from our taxes.
It's not coming from Polk County taxes, it's coming from Tennessee taxes.
It's being sent to HUD, and HUD then reviews the applications. It's not coming out of Polk County's tax rate. I understand, and you're valid, I, I don't have an issue with you voicing your opinion. My issue is, don't paint the picture that the club is putting kids at harm. I've heard all kinds of accusations. I've got twenty-one pages of emails that was sent threatening legal action with the state that was not discussed in any meeting, so I'm not sure when we voted to allow an email to go out on behalf of the commission threatening legal, legal action.
There was no legal action in it.
There, I, oh, you, well, it's threatened. There is not a address on this resolution that was passed. It's threatened right here, but if you don't get your documents, you will threaten legal action.
When was that one passed?
Mm, I got them highlighted here. And there's only three commissioners in that.
These emails are in here? Yes. Because I done that through myself, I didn't address it as a commission.
But you threw county commission, I've highlighted everything, a county commission every time. And then you included the three district commissioners, and then you included Robbie.
Because Robbie was in it.
So, my que, that's my whole point, is all of this is being done behind the scenes instead of being in public, like right now, let's talk about it.
That's why we're studying here, Kelly.
Well, that's Samantha, you done done all this threatening action behind the scenes.
I can do that through my commission part. I didn't address it as a whole commission.
You didn't speak on the whole commission. You, just saying, this is where there's an issue with what you can and what you can't do.
Did you say the school's on a superfund site?
That is what the website says. It just says that the actual superfund site is twenty-six miles.
An active superfund site in the school zone?
I said it's actual. It just says that's included, the school's in the township's land. However, as I said, we went through our phases of study. We have been approved, no violations. If you don't like that, take that up with the state. Don't come targeting us because we're being told we're okay. That's, that's it, just change your, your direction of where you're aiming it at. Your concerns are valid, I'm not saying they're not valid. I voted with you. But I'm saying direct your, your anger toward the state if that's where you have a problem.
What was wrong with the other locations that were? Then of this whole situation could have been a board.
Yeah.
And I was with you on that, I was with you on that. At the time, before we knew it, we was awarded that, we couldn't afford that. At that point, then it was already processed that way, and that's how that board voted. I voted no. I voted no. But I got outvoted. So, I did not support you, I support you. That's what I'm saying, turn your anger towards somewheres else instead of this. We, we are under lots of rules that we have to be okay, the state has to be okay with. So, if you don't like it, I understand, that you've got to turn your frustrations towards somewheres, somewheres else.
May I?
Yes, I was just fixing to say, y'all are done, Derek, you want to speak?
Well, I'm, I'm Derek Kinsey, uh, I work for Boys and Girls Club, and, uh, I aged myself a little bit. February was my thirtieth year, and so, it's kind of been a grip on my heart over the years, and there's no way, no way, I would ever put, or anybody in our organization would put anybody in harm's way. Before we take a donation, we're gonna look at it at all angles, and we're gonna look at what's, what's best. I mean, for people who don't understand, um, a little bit about the club, first of all, thank you. The fact that you're having this conversation tells me that you care, and I know that the commission has always had the back of the Boys and Girls Club. Obviously, you've seen what happened in Benton, and that wouldn't have happened if you wouldn't have played a role in that, so we're family in that. The fact that we're passionate about, uh, where we be, uh, where we're gonna be located, uh, that, that means a lot to me, too. I have always, in our organization, uh, we really do put safety first. I think sometimes it, it is confusing because of what you're, you're reading and hearing, and, and there's been a lot of back and forth in our community about what is, you know, what's safe and what's not safe, and what's the best location. First of all, to everybody in the room, you know, my commitment to you guys is that we'll take care of the club, and we'll take care of your kids, and, and we'll do that with what resources that we can gather. And so, for, for you guys to know that, that we care that much, this hasn't been an easy road. For some reason, you know, it's been a pushback, or not a pushback, but a, a situation that's not just been easiest to navigate. And then, but there's something in us that says, this area needs the club. Seeing changes in kids' lives over the years and seeing what, when you see someone change position, it does something for you as much as it does for them. And I think having a home that's outside of a school that gives us a place, uh, to do the work and the mission, uh, I think it's needed. I, if you think about, in our organization, we're in six counties right now, and, uh, you know, there's always the research that goes into, where, where, where's the best place? And where, what possible ways can we keep costs lower? What possible ways can we reach the most kids? How can we gain the most space? Kids take surveys in our organization, and school-based sites, as great as they are, they keep overhead down, but a lot of times, kids, uh, when they give feedback to traditional sites, which are standalone sites, always tend to do better. And then, you think about, uh, how, what are we gonna do in the areas that we're at? And so, we look into possible donation. I'm very grateful for what the township has offered. I hope, um, I hope they and, and the community knows that the township did offer some possibilities. And at the first, when we got denied, we didn't, but the first TNG got denied, we knew that we were gonna have to keep looking, and the question came up was, we're, we're gonna keep on doing it, or are we just gonna stop when the money doors close? And our board of directors, so we're a private entity, so if you, if you didn't realize that, we have a board of directors, they vote, uh, they, they mull these kind of conversations over, and they try to figure out what's best for the kids that we serve. No one on that organization ever, ever would do anything that would put someone in harm's way. In fact, they're gonna challenge me all the time about what levels of, you know, of care that we actually do. We go through safety audits every year. Uh, so, that's a big part of who we are. But our board votes to try to create, you know, uh, where we go as a private entity. But at the same time, you see in our organization, thinking of like Benton. So, how many people are glad that the Benton unit's there? Means, anybody know what the Benton unit does? Because if it doesn't make a difference, you know, that helps us because we can go to where we can make a difference. But I feel like, just, I mean, shoot, we had Boys and Girls Clubs of America people coming into our town, and they're supposed to be there to do audits, and they walk through and got their little books, and when they got finished with like fifteen minutes of the two-hour audit, they put their book in their car, and they went back in and said, this is the best culture of any organization that we've seen, and what we want to do is work here when we retire. And so, it painted the picture of the community. Families weren't in a rush, they got involved in their kids. And guess what? They challenged us. Parents can be feisty, they want to make sure that their kids are safe, and we're trying to do our best to care for their kids. When we take a donation home, a lot goes into that consideration. And for this property, before we took it, we did environmental one surveys, which said, here's some potential risk hazards, they look at everything, it's a hundred pages long. When they get finished with it, they say, here's one or two or three things that showed up. And then at that point, we had to do a phase two environmental, which then says, okay, you, you did that test, and it all came back, no contaminants, okay? So, that was one thing, right? Radon testing, lead paint came up. I, I thought it had lead paint. Sorry. I thought it had lead paint. And, and all the testing came back, no lead paint. But guess what, if you did have lead paint, you address it. Even in a, in a best, asbestos, every old building, and, and I know I'm speaking to people already noticed stuff, but just humor me. When you have to address asbestos, what are you dealing with, right? You're dealing with something, if you don't disturb it or disrupt it, it's okay. But we aren't going to do that because we're going to clean the building. You can capsulize it, right? You can enclose it, cover it, not move it, not disturb it, or you can take to the extent of abatement. And at that point, you're removing the problem. I'm willing to use funds to do that. We have other funds that we have already worked on. We've worked outside of the community to bring that to the table because it meant that much to us. So, we work with other programs to go, what can we do to help? Because the more we have, the more difference we're gonna make, and that's gonna be an amazing experience for our kids. I, I, I'm guessing, I'm listening to the conversation, and I'm guessing some people aren't aware that that property belongs to us. Man, that's our property already. We have the deed on the property. We have nineteen point nine acres, we have the facility, and it's on the front right corner. And the whole superfund thing that came up, and studying the superfund, it was an area where they wanted to address the waterways from here all the way to Parksville Lake. So, technically, the superfund site, if you didn't know, goes all the way to Parksville Lake. Twenty-six miles of river, all the way there. So, there's the idea that this whole area, Duck Town, you know, has a ton of that area as well. So, this whole area was being addressed, man, there's been two hundred million dollars spent up here over the past years that just got us to a place where we can, uh, feel like we're secure again, and we've, we're getting to the end of that. And that's, that's part of the safety levels that we've taken it to make sure that we're gonna do the best. to make sure that we're going to do the best for your kids. And so for you guys, I guess, it comes down to, if you allow money to flow through your commission, you have us to do more. And if you don't, that's your prerogative. And we will do it, but we will do less because that's what we'll, all we'll have to work with. So, thank you. And thank you seriously, because you do care. This room speaks for that. And you care for your kids and we do too.
Mr. York, Mike York, you still here?
Yes ma'am.
All right, would you like to speak?
I've got children in school here and I've, I've been here almost eighty years, born and raised. I've seen a lot of people die from the dust and all this stuff that comes from what they're cleaning up here. My family, everything. And there's no way, no way, that I would want to see any of our children put over there in a building that close to the old plant place. And I, I, I'm not arguing with you on the dust, I mean, on the test and all that that's from. I will not agree, never, to put a child over there in that building and have them over there every day. Personal feelings, I'd rather see it not be here, is to put a child over there.
I'm with you.
Not one. It's not safe. I know it ain't because I spent thirty-two years over there working. And I've got issues. I've got lung issues and all that from the dust in the mines and the dust in the plant. Worked at all of it. And there's no way that I would even agree to any of it to have a place over there.
What is there to look at over there?
Hey sir, what?
You've got nothing. You're, you're getting the bottom floor. You're not getting the whole building.
We have the whole building.
When did they change it? Okay, where are you going to put a, a, a gymnasium? Out there in the dust where, where every time the wind blows, from that, where they're pressing that gravel and all that up over there? The dust has got everything in it, I know. I've got it right here. I appreciate everything about what you said about the kids and all that. I've got kids, grandkids, don't want to see them there. Worked there for thirty-two years. I know what's there.
Marcella Osteen?
I should have done more homework on this because I'm a little confused and I'd like to have some clarification before I proceed. The land that you're talking about, that you own, the nineteen something acres, where is that?
So if you know where the, the road right beside the dentistry?
Yeah.
That piece right there left that's touching the T-shaped apartments, this way. So it's just road front.
It's at Buddy Hanes's property?
It's at the far right corner where nothing's been.
Like the old building up there?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, okay. Now, y'all were talking about some other option, right? Okay. So, it appears that Buddy Hanes is yet again becoming a thorn in the flesh to this area. We put down the bio solids and I think, but I don't know if it's really put down. So now this comes up. And when I heard about this, that they're going to build a Boys and Girls Club or put one on that property, I, I thought they were kidding me. I thought, I thought, what's the punchline? Am I on candid camera? And this is ludicrous, it's absurd to think about putting a Boys and Girls Club on that property? It's absurd. So, I'm thinking, okay, it's not a joke, it's, they're really going to try it. And so I just don't understand, I don't understand, I don't understand. There's got to be places, other places that you can get that would not have the problem there. Superfunds, this is stuff that lasts forever. I mean, come on, you know this. Okay, so I, I think, what am I missing here? Okay, are, are there anybody up here that want, is for putting the Boys and Girls Club, Girls Club anywhere on that property? Anybody up here on the commission?
We said we were not for the property. I said I'm not for that.
Not?
And I, I am on the board of the Boys and Girls Club.
Okay.
That is how they voted. But I also know that they're not going to put something that is directly going to harm a, harm a child. So, again, I understand valid concern. It is, it's a valid concern.
So would you vote for it? Are you for it? Being remediated and, are you in any way for it?
I am not, I'm, I can't vote on this tonight because I am a part of the Boys and Girls.
Well, would you in the future? Where's your hand?
I'm not going to take any money away. No, I'm not taking my support away from the Boys and Girls Club. That's what this is for.
So then you would be for putting there to save the money in the pocket?
I wonder about saving the money in the pocket? But if that's our only, if that is the option or go away, then yes.
So it, this or nothing?
Basically, yes.
Okay, that's bad. I'd rather have nothing.
And that's valid.
Anybody else here with her?
My opinion is, I don't feel like it's our business, is what my problem is. I feel like this is a Boys and Girls Club.
It is your business.
And, no, it's not. It really isn't. I mean, I'm not going to get into that fight, but I feel like this is something with genuine concerns, I'm not blowing it off. I just don't feel like this is commission's issues. I feel like it is parents and Boys and Girls Club to make that decision. And for y'all to get with the people that give this a clearance. It wasn't us. And if, if the state people cleared this site for the Boys and Girls Club, then, and it's wrong, then they need to be the ones that's hammered by this. Because I don't.
Here's why it's your business. We elect you guys. This is why it's your business.
We gave, we gave.
Because you're our elected officials.
But, but it's a private entity.
It's a private entity.
It's a private entity.
That's the thing.
We don't control it.
I don't say control, I'm saying it is yours.
But you are controlling it.
Okay, do as much as you can, as much as you can, to get this not going to that site.
But you opened the door, so if you overstabs telling a private entity where they can go and what they can do, then no business owner or organization in here is safe and it's something that any one of us disagrees with.
Okay, Phil Southey, that sounds okay, like when he hit the rupture road, this is absurd and you know it and I know it.
Well, and that's where. Well, and that's where the people that cleared this.
That puts more problem on us. I mean, we don't, you're, you're elected to do this for us as much as possible.
But that's, we did.
We are and we did and the state says it's okay.
Oh, you know what? The state says it's okay. We say it's not okay.
I'm not with.
Hey guys, okay, whoa, 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 whoa. Time limit is up on this one, we got to move on to the next one. Melissa Key?
Wow, I forgot to follow. I'm a listy, I wrote notes just to, you know, keep myself on track. First thing I'm hearing, first of all, I'm also on the board of the Boys and Girls Club. I've just been there for a couple of years. I've been a youth pastor at a foreign, not pastor, I'm sorry. I was a youth director at a foreign prison community church for several years. So I ultimately have a huge heart for kids in this area, for kids in this community, for kids from foreigner, Turtle Town, Mackaysville, all of this surrounding area. I see a great need for the Boys and Girls Club to be in this area and to reach all the kids that they can possibly reach. And for a facility, to me, this facility, and let me just back up. To hear that the issue is that this is on a superfund site, if the superfund site's twenty-six miles, where is safe then? I mean, I don't, to me, that makes no sense. If, if we're saying the superfund site's the issue and it's that big, nowhere's safe. Boys and Girls Club can't be up here. I mean, I may be speaking incorrectly on that, but to me, just listening on the issue of, of that being the issue, that just doesn't seem right for me. Secondly, I work with copper-based and utility districts also. I deal with TDEC. I see what they, they prolonged a tank project that we had up there. Because they were concerned with bats roosting in a tree that we might potentially be cutting down. They prolonged the process for that. In my opinion, if TDEC is so concerned about bats and critters, salamanders and the creek and the environment, I have full assurance that they are, you know, not going to put kids in harm's way. And if all that's clear, we have to rely on somebody. I don't think that somebody's being paid off to be saying that, you know, that they're going to approve something that's going to come back on the state level. I mean, that just makes no sense to me. Secondly, I just see that this Boys and Girls Club, again, is so needed and this building and this property being donated, I see it as a blessing. I see it as impacting so many kids' lives, so many, you know, future of kids that come through that. And that's the future of our area, of our community, of our, you know, this area that everybody in here is so concerned about the kids. And hopefully that's who y'all are concerned about, which it sounds like everybody's concerned about. But that's the future of our area, our citizens for this county and this area and our immediate area. If they don't have an organization like this to come in and help fill in the gaps where they may be missing from, you know, parents who are on drugs or being raised by grandparents and they don't have, you know, good guidance from people out of school and during the summer program, that's a huge opportunity missed on kids in our area that I think that if we, well, I don't know, y'all don't have the huge say-so, but if that gets taken away and taken away from our kids, I think it's a crime shame on people to, you know, take that away from our area and from our kids and from our future.
I just want to say that I am in favor and I think the commission is. But personally me, I am in favor, in favor of having a Boys and Girls Club up here. I'm just not in favor of the location.
I agree.
I mean, this thing on something has failed six different tests from the state of Tennessee and then in the water and the soil.
Our, our reports show that it's safe.
It's right here. I mean, they literally just passed it. It's, it's, it's literally right here.
We're looking our property.
Yes, it's the whole property. And that's probably why.
Hey guys, let's be quiet and listen, okay?
That's probably why our whole area is now considered a superfund site because it's running to the water and in the ground. Y'all are drinking this. Y'all just remember this, this is on the Tennessee State website. This is why we don't want those kids over there. If they put dirt in their mouths, what are y'all going to do when they're sick? I mean, you can't, you, you can't fix that. I, I mean, they, they're breathing this in. They're literally at school on the playground being sick. I've worked with Dr. Jones where teachers have, they can smell it in their classrooms and now you're trying to put it over there. I mean, it's just crazy. I, I want them to have a Boys and Girls Club. I spent, I did the Dancing with the Stars, I spent a lot of time at the Cleveland. It was amazing. That is such an amazing environment for these kids, but we have to have someplace for them to be safe. And it's just, we want them to have it.
What is the other location options? Or are they in whatsoever?
They're currently at Duck Town School right now. And then township gave them that piece of property. Someone was going to donate the grading. We were going to work as a county to get them sewage and water. I mean, what was going to, a lot was going to be taken care of to take off of them. And, I mean, I understand you're going to clean it up, I get it. You're going to, you're going to clean it up. I, I did research, it could cost two-hundred thousand dollars just to clean it up.
You're talking about what was going to happen, why didn't it happen?
First of all, there's, there's no bio solids.
Everything was.
Because they chose to do this other side.
We, we, part of the reason we took the donation was there was, we knew that bio solids is a, is a concern of the community, but that, I think that's confusing too because there's not been bio solids ever done on the property that we accepted. So there's no bio solids on our property and we're going to be separated from that world anyway with a different entrance.
The wind blows, sir, the wind blows.
All right.
The dust.
Well, in that case, the school is closer by Crows Creek.
That's exactly right. And that's before the people knew that it was a superfund. Eight years ago, the school zone there was built in the nineties, early sixties.
Well, she'll tell you too, that, because I know she does, does research, that bio solids have ended actually in March. So that's not even going to be an issue. And if it's already there and it's closer to another location, then I, so I mean.
You know it's going to stop?
We, we listen to everybody one at a time. Let's, let's not talk over each other, let's not get anything done.
That's the thing, when we contact TDEC, they still have their permits. No matter who's going to run it, I mean, we've been told that, you know, the cert, the other person's not there. It don't matter who's running it. This, their permits are still there. It's not a personal thing toward anybody. They still have their permits with TDEC to bring it in. They have their permits to blast and to mine and stuff, like, that's fantastic. I'm glad that, you know, we're going to have jobs for our area. But what happens if they start blasting and something does happen? I mean, I'm concerned with our schools too. Everything that we live around is on open mine shafts. They start blasting, who, who's to say that none of us are going to be falling in it? I, I mean, we don't know because they're filled with water and compression tests cannot be done with water. I mean, the closer you get to that place, the more harm that your kids are going to be in. I'm really concerned with our kids being at the school. I, I mean, I have a huge concern with it. It's, I want you guys to have this. I, I really do. I, I, I don't want to take nothing from you.
So do we need to start implementing something on a school level with being tested as well? And I do just want to say, I mean, we do have layers of support from the schoolteachers, maybe not, in the elementary school up here.
We need to take care of them, I'm worried about them.
I guess I'm just trying to figure out what is our goal, what's our ultimate goal? Because I think we can be here all night talking, so what is our goal with this?
Any way possible, we can change locations at all?
I mean, it wasn't.
It's needed to us.
Okay.
It's needed to us.
Well, more, more on the, more on the location there. We, we met with, we met with Mr. Keating and representatives and representatives of the Boys and Girls Club before, before they decided completely, is my understanding, on Copper Hill Industries.
Wasn't it needed just this week though?
It's been in the works.
I think so. But we expressed all these concerns that we have then. And offered other locations, the two oh six Cougar Drive, the, the land from the township. And there was another location just right across the parking lot, right here where we're at, that was never even discussed. So three other alternate locations. And at that time, you hadn't got all the grant money.
We offered help financially too.
Yeah, we offered to help financially. And at that time, you hadn't got all the grant money. And you said you didn't know if you had enough money to build a new facility at that location.
That is correct. We had an engineer work the site, especially the one that we were most interested in, which was Road Front on sixty-eight. And it was going to be four-hundred thousand to get on the site for the excavation.
Yeah, we offered help.
And that also did not allow, after going back and telling us the board, the idea of green space and, and the other things we needed, even parking was limited. So when you get offered property to the level that we did, it made the most sense for us. I understand you guys have the right to have the concern, but at this point, we have the property and I.
Well, let me, let me finish. Let me finish what I was saying.
Yes ma'am.
At that time, you hadn't got all the grant money. And then you said if you got all the grant money, I remember you saying that if you got all the grant money, you wouldn't have a problem building there on that location, on Highway sixty-eight. The problem with the school was, is you didn't want to be associated with the school for some reason.
That was not true.
Well.
I think we're in competition.
I think it's in your letter you sent us. I think it's in your letter you sent us, your concern with the school.
No, I said if we were, yeah, if we're, let me explain, twenty-first century dollars, we don't want to jeopardize what Dr. Jones has.
Well, there were, there were concerns about you being at the school.
But how come that's a concern here, but it's not in Etowah? Because Etowah is, theirs is pretty close to their school, right?
We're actually in Etowah First Baptist Church, so.
Anyway, anyway, there were concerns about you being close to the school. And you voiced those concerns.
Yeah.
And then the, the property on sixty-eight, the concern was, is the excavation, which we offered to help with. And you hadn't received all the grant money yet. Well, and then you made the statement that if you got the, all the grant money, you wouldn't have a problem building on that location. Well, after I found out that you got all the grant money, I personally called board members, I called Kelly and discussed it with her, John Miles, and asked John Miles to pass my name and number on to the rest of the board members to reconsider that location because of all of this concern that we. that we have right now about.
And this concern was going on way before you even got that. And I mean, it wasn't like it was a hush, hush thing. I mean, we, it, it was something that was all over the news. Like, we've been fighting this for a while. I, I mean, it, it would have been respectful to have an, at least an open house with families here. Their kids are going to be there. I mean, you know how many parents called when they first started because they couldn't breathe outside? They had, they couldn't even go outside to play. I mean, it would have been respectful just to have an open house with them.
Anyway, I was responded back to by John Miles and said that the board would not reconsider that location. So I, I'm going to repeat my question that I asked Kelly to you.
Sure.
What was wrong, what's wrong with this, these other locations?
The property to get on, I just hope you know, that, that what was taken into consideration was for that was because of the excavation cost to get on.
We offered the help.
The green space. When we are on timelines for grants, we have a grant called EFAG, Financial Stability Accountability Group. We're already behind on that grant, waiting to see on the other grants because we want to make sure that we adhere to all the rules. Because those grants require the environmental testing and all the things that we do. And what's interesting about that, I heard somebody say the state said it was okay. The state did say it was okay. The state is not the ones who did the environmental surveys. Private entities that had no skin in the game that came and told us that these areas were okay. So those were things that we took into consideration. The fact that we were renting property at, at a dollar for every five years and was having to try to figure that out. And then we actually have 19.9 acres, 20 acres basically granted to us. We talked to the architects. The architects say, well, we've got this amount of money because at that time, we didn't have a lot. And so we were trying to, to go before him. He said, well, you can't do that. You can't build a building for this, uh, for this price. And so we actually got discouraged. We said, well, what about renovating old building? We showed the pictures. Well, you can do that. I was like, really? Even with all the expenses and cleanup? Yes. So we started working on plans. We've had plans drawn up for a while now. We, I don't know if you have a copy of them anywhere up here, but there's, there's plans that show the teen center. That shows the, the game room area, the computer lab, and the whole stage and the dance area. All that stuff's been through. We've met with structural engineers. We've met with firemen engineers. So those things have been in the works, you know? So that's, that's why, you know, I, you know, I'm sorry. It's just, it is kind of what our board decided they, you know?
You had other options though, right?
Are they going to have kids coming to that?
Hey, guys, hold on, hold on. We got some questions from up here. We've got a list. We've got a timeframe. We've got to work on it, okay?
I'm sorry.
Commissioner.
Uh, you said there, there's something about, something being closer to the school? Or you started to say something that everybody kind of cut you off.
Who, me?
Yeah, uh, it was something about the land being.
It was just, it was the township that offered when they first started was, was beside, behind the school or road frontage. And it's that section, what is it? The campaign tree where people put the signs up right there before it dips down? The problem, once we got, uh, our city engineer, uh, I actually have another city engineer that's on our board, not on this board, but on the corporate board. And he took a weekend to come up here and do, uh, work all weekend and drew up the plans. And he called me with bad news. And he said, and Derek, I know your heart's set on this, but here's what you're looking at now. You can't do this here. It falls off too quick. You won't be able to, by the time you bring retention laws and you have to deal with the creek that's going through, you don't have green space, you don't have, and, and the idea that somebody could help us locally. When we, when you do these state grants, you, you probably know this, you have three bids on everything. And, and a lot of times, they're going to require outside people to come in. And we would, we'd rather use local. That, it's, it's just a hard, hard thing to navigate when you're trying to keep, keep costs where they need to be. And also trying to get, stretch your dollar further. You know, when, when you have the land you can do, because like in our idea, I don't know if you bet like pickleball, we were thinking pickleball courts and parks and trails and bike tracks. We have three bike tracks in our organization now. Build, build something for our kids to, to play and have pavilions and, and those kind of things too. So that's still an option for the community to have a greenway and to kind of go through this area. It's a reclamation of an, of an ugly sore, you know, that people are talking about. How nice would it be to bring your community? And then you know that the Highway 5 is planned to come through right there. It'll come right near the building and then loop back around. That area is going to be nice for the club, uh, for people to see it so that they can get to us easily and know that we're there to kind of support their needs. It's just a decision that our board made, you know? And, and I, I'm sure y'all were in the boardroom when, when those decisions were made, but that, you know, I'm kind of speaking on behalf of the organization.
I, I was thinking you were saying that one of the properties y'all looked at was closer to the dump site than.
If you look on the map where the dump site is on the property on the backside of CHI, where the composting actually takes place is closer to that property on the road frontage of 68 than it is to the property that we accepted. Our property's kind of been left along on the front side. That's why I know biosolids and stuff, it's one of the safest. If you think about the safest place in our community, that building is the most structurally sound building in this community. It's got marble floors, concrete pillars, brick, uh, outside walls, basically 30,000 square feet. I mean, hey, you talk about cost per dollar and where it's at. And part of the main floor has already been worked on.
The building is 30,000 square feet?
It is, sir. Yes. You, yeah, the basement's a little short, so, um, so, yeah, so each floor, so there's a main floor, there's an up floor, and there's a basement, so, um, so, yeah, so, so that was, that was appealing.
I just have one really simple question, I think.
Hold on just a second.
Thank you. I just, if the Boys and Girls Club could answer one quick question for us. When the boys and girls come on to any Boys and Girls Club site, they have to sign a liability waiver on it soon. Is that correct? Because I know on my property, I have to have a liability waiver signed by anybody who's going to come on my property. Is that correct?
We have a membership application that just talks about.
So all liabilities waived, correct? So 15 to 20 years down the road, when these kids start getting, getting really sick, guess what? There's nobody going to be responsible for this because we're signing off all rights before a kid comes on to the site. If they get sick, I'm sorry.
But there's no true evidence that says that place is more dangerous than being in the other school.
But there's no evidence that it isn't either.
But if you're, if you get your mouth full of it, that any place in this area could fall subject to that.
You are absolutely right.
So we could just, you know, if the club didn't come, then we're totally safe anywhere.
So shouldn't we err on the side of caution, Ron?
Do not have a club here?
Yeah, I would say that would be the safer thing to do.
I'm sorry, do you have children here?
I do, I have grandchildren, kids.
Okay, guys, we're going to move on. Commissioner Brooks has a question he'd like to ask.
Yeah, I just, I got one question, uh, and I'm just playing open mind and objective. And I'm 100% support of the Boys and Girls Club. My voting record proves it over years. But, uh, one way they made over at Cougar Drive, you know, I mentioned, the county might be willing to help financially. And it's like, and there was a lead considered. Y'all didn't say nothing back or ask us about it or discuss it with us or, it's like what's an option to you? So why was that?
Well, I mean, we, we really didn't get anything in writing that said that that's, that, how much or what that could look like, you know? So I didn't.
I mean, I couldn't write it on the sidewalk back, you know, on the side of the road. I'm just saying.
But you also didn't bring it up.
I approached you about it.
Did you guys discuss that in a meeting that?
No, I told you, I didn't say we was going to. I told you the county made, you'll be willing to help financially. And that was the end of it.
When it comes to our kids, we'll help.
My thing is if you're upset because you ain't telling them where to go when you don't have any money invested in it, when you give money, then you really won't be upset thinking you get to tell them what to do. It's the same with any organization or business. When you start giving them money, you think you've got to say so and what goes on.
I just had that thought and keep it on Cougar Drive instead of the club. And I didn't speak for everybody. I said the commission might be willing.
I know, you did. But I, I mean, is there, just curious, is there, I know we've heard from some people, is there any parents that's here that currently attend the unit up here? Can they speak? Yes, absolutely. Do you want to speak? So y'all are voicing concern about the possibility of them being next to the same thing that you're saying that the teachers can smell when they're at the school? So if it's in this area, then why is anything that you're offering them any safer or better?
Well, right here, I have an aerial photo. Up here is your building that you're getting. And it is a beautiful building. And right here is the compost building. That's where it was.
I was raised.
And it's actually not closer to the.
I was raised on that hill over there. I know where that building is. I grew up on that hill. I used to taste the chemicals in my mouth growing up that's no longer in this air.
So you're okay with your kids being closer to it? Because.
But we're not having our kids roll around the ground.
They're going to be breathing the dust and the air that's coming off of it and all that.
It's in the air.
And they're still going to be working on it, aren't they?
It's all around you.
They're still going to be over there just like their mom.
They're going to keep that, okay.
That dust and stuff has soaked into this ground for over 100 years.
So it's not in the air.
Um, Derek, um, in this photo, you said that that piece of property from Township that gave it was closer than the building, but it's not. The building is right here. There's the compost. Right here's the closest spot to that on 68, and it's actually that fireworks store. So if you want to, if you want to, I can send you this because this is an aerial photo of it. Um, I, I mean, I'm just trying to.
I understand. I know you want to know too, the, the biosolids, when they, there's no biosolids on our property, okay? For one. So not having a biosolid conversation is irrational in my mind.
Put you right next to it.
But it go, it went to the back of the property.
But you're right next.
No.
Hey, guys, let us speak.
How far back?
The kids at school could not breathe sometimes for the biosolids blowing across that property.
We're going, we're going to cease right here and go ahead. And if we're going to have a motion or whatever, get the vote then.
I don't know. I don't think anybody knows where we both know.
Derek, I actually want to question.
Yes, sir.
If we do vote, then vote.
No, sir.
The kids go to the club, they'll be that one. It's going to be up to the parents where they want to take their kids to. And I mean, I'm sorry that it might boil down to that, but it, you know, it's like going to a babysitter. You know, those babysitters that you don't like, kids are not going to go there. If you don't feel safe taking your child to this, I would.
Can I say something?
I don't think we're going to carry your problem.
Well, that too. You're losing six minutes.
There's several things here that are not.
Okay, we're done. We're done. Do we have a motion for this resolution?
Wait, let, let people talk. We got time.
Uh, well, look, it's getting out of control.
I have a list.
I'm on the list.
Okay, have a seat and we'll go by the list then.
She doesn't want me to talk.
I, I will let everybody that's on my list talk. Darren Kimsey, you are on the list to talk next.
Hello, I'm Darren Kimsey. I grew up here, uh, live here, proud to be a copper basin cougar. Like many of you, maybe, maybe you have, maybe haven't. I grew up riding dirt bikes. I've been all over these mines. Mac, I know you worked over there. You're still here with us and I'm thankful for it. We've all breathed this stuff in.
I have as much as I am.
Probably so. We all live here. We drink the water. We try to do our best to clean it. I mean, if, if they would have offered the Boys and Girls Club, O'Koye Dentistry, I feel like we wouldn't be here having this conversation. You know, what is the difference? It's like, it's like there's some sort of vendetta against Buddy Hayes. I don't care. I don't care what he does at his property. This is for the kids. And we're going to lose a bunch of money and an opportunity for these kids not to be in the Polk County News in their recess section.
Or how much would it take for one of your kids?
Hey, you've been upset all evening and I respect you, but please let people talk.
Hey, guys, if we continue the screaming, we'll just call the police and have you removed, okay? We let you speak, Mr. York. Let the rest of them speak. Continue.
And I apologize for getting heated there. I mean, I grew up here. I've got friends. I've got family. Oh, I had good parents. I had a good church. I had a good, good youth group. Had plenty of good examples. A lot of these kids don't. And if we can get in front of these kids in a place that's not school, we may be able to reach some of these kids. That's all I'm saying. Please just consider that. I mean, O'Koye Dentistry would be fine if that building was offered. Nobody'd say a word. This isn't no different. Thank you.
Couple of things. Have some experience with those vessels and that sort of thing. That is a very complicated issue to be rid of. I think the, the thing that bothers me the most is the way all this transpired. I was in the, at, we came to the commission meeting when the presentation was made originally. And there was no talk of any other property other than the one by the school. And I think that's why the commission said at that time, this sounds like a good idea. Now, in the meantime, I mean, that has evolved into a different situation. And as far as I know, this is the first time it's ever been re-presented to the commission. So essentially, what we got here is what they call in the car world, a bait and switch. There hasn't been any transparency to this whatsoever. My opinion is the county has to approve this. Yes, Boys and Girls Club are the ones going to run the operation. You're going to get the money. You're going to do all that stuff. But you need the county's approval for some reason. I don't know. What I have heard is you need the county's approval to get more money. Is that true?
There's pass through grants that can do it.
So that is true.
Yes, sir. That part is.
So those are things that, that's what you're so concerned about losing.
We, we're planning on bringing the club here.
You didn't answer my question. You're very good at selling stuff. You should have been a salesman.
Yeah, thank you, but.
But let me finish. That's what we're discussing here really, is how much more money can they get through the commission?
And it's all for that building though. Just so you know, none of them.
I don't care what it's for. Let's be honest.
Just give us more and do more.
Going into Polk County, if you go somewhere else.
Let, I don't care.
Okay. I'm just.
That's what you want. You should present it that way. You should have presented these alternate sites long before now, okay? And I'll tell you, I've got, I've spoken before about the rumor mill. Rumor mill says it's very funny that Dan Howell visited the property with me guys and all of a sudden it got approved. Is that true or not?
Dan Howell's never been with me on the property, sir.
But you've been on the property with, with us.
I've been on the property for a while. We own it, so.
Well, you own it, you're gifted the property. Does that correct?
Yes.
When were you gifted the property?
We were gifted it back at, at the first of the year.
We were gifted it back at the first of the year, and then we've been going through...
You have a deed that states that...
I have a deed that I recorded this week, but I had it.
That's a coincidence.
Then we got the property.
You got the deed, and you haven't reported it until this week.
No, no, we signed the deed on Monday, but we've been working on the deed for a while because, see, what you have to understand is...
No, I understand.
No, 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 there's one piece you're missing. We were getting a survey, and at first it was going to be ten acres, then it went to sixteen point eight. Then it went to nineteen point nine. When we did the survey, we did an appraisal on the point. That's why it took a while, though. Just so you know.
But the point is, you've known this since January, and you haven't been before the commission until now.
That's because they want to rescind the approval for us to have the grant dollars.
They already approved the grant dollars through the resolution, but now the, the...
But they did that, like everybody here, I think, with the assumption they were approving the site over by the school.
That's exactly right.
No, the grant had no site listed on it.
I don't care what it has. Well, that's the whole bait and switch. That's what you do when you want to change your mind.
Well, the grant people control most, is what she just said.
But no, but you folks have not been upfront to get that.
I understand you, sir.
One is no pill away.
Let Jennifer Chee don't speak.
I am a former employee, and my son goes to boys' school, and I'm blessed. And what y'all are doing is poor. So that building is there. I have, I have cleaned, I have spent hours cleaning it up. It is, it is beautiful. What they're going to be able to do for those kids, they're not going to be able to do that. They're not.
You realize you can't see forever, Jennifer. You can't see...
Uh, let's let her speak, and then we'll go on to the next one, okay?
You can't smell bio solids. When I was cleaning up there, they were actively doing that, and you couldn't smell them up there at that point.
Do they?
Then they're not. I, I just can't believe, like, y'all just want to take this away. Like what he said, oh, if it was at the, at that denis garden, it wouldn't be a problem. And it's just like a, just a little rock and you can get that stuff.
It's the buddy and the bios. That's really what it amounts to. It's nothing to do with the building or anything else. It's the buddy and the bios.
Yes, exactly.
It's not because you care about your kids or your kids help.
No, that, to say, y'all should do something with elementary school. Exactly. That place is full.
You realize that I've been trying to get smell detectors because of how bad it is, and we can't get the people's approval? We can't get them here on that. We have been. We have been. We've been working on it. No, I don't want it. I don't want it that close. They want to put their money to choose, though. They act, okay, so that you understand, the resolution that they're talking about, it's not their money. It's government grant dollars that were applied for by us. Okay, okay, I'm sorry. I'm not trying to, I just, maybe you understand it, but I want to make sure. They don't actually get to approve us getting the grant. They're just saying, hey, these people are in Polk County. We would like to apply for them, that. And when we did the resolution, the first time, we didn't know where we were going. So there was no intent of deceives. I know you feel that way, and I go shake your hand.
The one that we approved had no actual...
Okay, guys, we're shortly hooked.
Let's just make everybody understand that.
Guys.
This is, anything I had planned is just out the door. I'm not here to debate any sides. I'm not here to debate bio solids. I'm here as a mother. I have kids that are in the Boys and Girls Club now. I've also worked for the school since I was seventeen years. And I really think that this is a program that we do need to keep here, and anything that we can do to help it. Like he said, we have so many kids, when they leave school, when they're at school, that's their safe place. That's where they're getting fed. That's where they're getting, probably nurturing from anywhere. But now they have an opportunity to go somewhere else to get more, and during the summer. School only, it doesn't go all summer long. There's kids right now in Duck Town that need places to go, but there's not transportation to get them started into Boys and Girls Club. And I just worry, you know, without more, it does take funds to make things happen. And I worry without more of those, if, I mean, I don't want to lose our club. So I, you know, I support the club. My kids love it. They wake up wanting to go. She, Grace especially, she loves it. And it's just a very good asset for our county, and it's something that we need to work to keep here.
Um, I can't read the last name wrong.
Strangia?
Yes.
Um, so I've been to several of these county commission meetings over the last few years where Buddy Hayes, T. Deck, Chattanooga City Chattanooga keeps telling us that that site is so, so bad that the only thing that they can do is bring in Atlanta Chattanooga sewage to dump it there to remedy. So everything else is fine, but that one site is the worst possible thing. So I must be missing something, definitely missing something, when there's other sites available, and yet this is the site that was chosen, knowing that all this is going on. And that's, you know, that's really, I mean, that's all I have to say, but I'm just, I know I'm missing something. Clearly am.
We're just, the site on the front white corner by the road, by the denis garden.
Just because y'all drew a line and subdivided the property, it doesn't...
It's never had it on there. That's just not where it goes.
It's an active super fund site. There's difference. Y'all talk about, okay, the whole area, the whole river corridor, super fine, yada, yada, yada. But that's an active super fund site. They're still actively running. That's saying that site is not cleaned up yet. When sites are cleaned up, there are uses that they can be done. I've seen redevelopment on uses. I've seen live work and play communities all over the country. That can happen on a super fund site, but that's after they're cleaned up. That site is not cleaned up.
Never will be a lot of...
And how long is it going to take, Derek, to get everything done over here?
Well, first, our property is not touching all that area on it, and so the areas that they were addressing are on the far back or middle places. It's far away from us. So I think there's confusion on exactly where we're at. We're on the road on the far right downtown. If it was an issue, the whole downtown would be suffering from the corner. It's not suffering from the corner.
It is an issue downtown.
It's suffering.
It is an issue.
So nowhere in this city is safe for kids, is what you're saying.
Because it's suffering on the back. It's, it's, you're, what you're frustrated with is that the back's the process.
Hey, 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 hey. All right, guys.
The reason is a super...
Stop. Guys, stop. I had a question.
Yes, sir.
How, how long before the building, the renovation, how long down the road is that process?
Probably, yeah, two years.
Okay. So I would think if they're, do they still have their permit? If it's permitted, would that not help to not be able to dump bio solids there if it's a kids' organization on site at some point?
Yeah. Bio solids are not the only problem. There's active mining adjacent to your site.
We've cleared the list. We're ready to do whatever we need to do. What's the vote? I don't know what's the vote. We got a question for Rob. He's behind it.
What's the, what's the process? Old funds, they've been awarded the funds, right? Yes, through the county. They were both through the county. Okay, so how, what has to be done to stop that, to stop? I don't know that. I do not know.
Well, if you rescind this...
Does that even, does that change the...
We won't get the money.
That's what I'm asking.
Because like how the CDGB has worked in the past, when we've been awarded for water grants and water lines and everything else, is it comes through after somebody signs off on it. Like say, it's a project manager for whatever, whoever, help me out, doing like water sewer and water lines. Whoever signs off on that would send it to who...
So John, what your question is, is if we turn this down, what happens to that money? That money would go back, and some other part would be eligible to get the six hundred and thirty thousand dollars that is applied.
But does it mean Polk County?
Does not mean Polk County. It also does not mean that the next time Polk County applies for a CDGB grant, that we would be looked at and/or awarded.
I'm thinking, well, once you turn it down.
Once you turn, make a date, sink, so to say.
And it's like you all were talking earlier. Yes, 2022, I applied for this CDGB grant. You all granted that through the resolution, and it turned back. We did not get it. And so then in March of 23, you all passed the resolution. We applied again for a CDGB grant on behalf of...
With no address.
On behalf of the Boys and Girls Club, for them to pitch in on their seventeen percent, and it was awarded.
It didn't help.
Now, we don't have that money, and that's important. I want everybody to understand. I read the here's the... But once it comes through, and once the Boys and Girls Club starts their process, then like Kelly was saying, once they're engineering, and once there's a part of that that is done and it's signed off on, then it's relinquished to us to make the payment to wherever it goes to. Then whenever the next part, and whenever the Boys and Girls Club completes the next step, and they ask for a payment to figure all that, then it's done, and we flow it through. That's how those CDGB grants work.
And not, normally, to whoever does the work.
Correct. It goes back to whoever does the work. Same thing's been done in water line extensions throughout the county for a lot of utilities. And HUD development, yes, all these things are CDGB grants that we apply for. Sometimes we get them, sometimes we don't.
And it's clear, there's no other option then for a difference.
They're not going to...
Not going to change anything, and I can't, I can't sit here and not, I mean, I can't sit here and take money away from them for any way, reason.
Just know that people here that does have kids are saying they want this and need this. Just so y'all know that.
I have a question. Yes. How many people sitting in this room are here out of concern for our children? And how many people sitting in this room are concerned for the tourists being run out of town because of the smell from the vendetta y'all got against this guy? Because his smell is going to run your tourism out of town and hurt your business.
Are you saying this?
I don't think he often anymore, so I don't think it's a vendetta against him. We have a personal interest in him. You don't care where he goes. It's still there.
We've, we've raised our... I was raised here. I was raised here. I work every day, so my child don't go without. My child never went without before the tourism come to town. I'm fifty-five years old. I'm a Polk County resident. Born and raised here. My daddy worked in that company over there. So I'm here out of concern for the children of this community that wants, no, I'm talking. Okay. The drug issues in this county, the children that have strayed away because they did not have guidance. They did not have parents that cared what happened to them. They had nowhere to go, nowhere to turn, so they turned to drugs. How many parents in this county do you know, most of them don't even know where their children are at? Grown children that graduated from this high school. No. All right, turn around so I can. Oh, okay. Are you a resident here? Were you born and raised here?
No.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. I don't care. I'm quite familiar with where I'm at.
So you've got to be born and raised here.
All right.
All right, we're just ready to vote.
Look forward to rescind.
No, just to rescind.
You don't want to do it.
They don't. They don't want to say it. They're just not...
Okay. So what race is it?
Don't y'all take me there so the people can understand what you're doing.
No, we're not. What are you doing this here? What are we doing here? Are we done?
Yep.
She says she doesn't want to do anything.
I mean, literally, you've sat here and told us that we don't want to take away from these kids. We're sitting here fighting for their health. You can sit here and read it all day long, but you're sitting here making us look like a bad person for trying to stick up for them.
You do, you're doing that, yeah.
I got handed this resolution when everybody else did. Everything's not been communicated. There's, everything's been done on the back end. So no, and my goal is to not make anybody look bad, and being prepared would have made all of us look better. We need to fight, we need to fight the issues with the county, not each other. Showing who y'all support and who I was against it. Because it's your business. We don't need to live up here. Three commissioners and y'all. I'm not about to give you my, I, I don't deserve that. You know, I don't deserve to take it away from you and give it to someone else.
Second, we're adjourned.
Because it's, it's all right.
Thank you for tagging me in, man. Feel free to do it again.
Resolution.
And it is, we're like, we've got something to vote on.